Get going. Are we all sitting back?
Yeah, he said yes.
Okay, we're gonna get going. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the February 26th Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting. On my left, we have Mr. Carter Fark, who's our Deputy Planning Manager for the City of Nashua. Across the way, we have Mr. Jay Minkara, Mr. Steve Lionel, Mr. Jack Currier. Mr. Lionel is our Vice Chair, excuse me, Mr. Jack Currier, Ms. Estaphia Boris, Ms. Maryam McKay, who's our Secretary, and I'm JP Boucher, your Chairman tonight. This meeting is written, is recorded by a written transcript and is also video-recorded. Please direct all testimony to the microphone, and we ask that only one person speak at a time. If you don't have tonight's copy of the agenda, it's on the side table there under the big screen on the sidewall. Tonight, we'll be hearing requests for deviations from the Nashua zoning court in the form of applications for special exceptions and variances. And I'll describe both of those. A special exception is a request that seeks permission to do something that the zoning ordinance permits only under special circumstances. The five criteria required for this board to grant a request for a special exception are: One, the requested use must be listed in the Table of Use Regulations as a special exception. Two, the requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. Three, the requested use will not overload any public water, drainage, or sewer system or any other municipal system such that other areas of the city will be subjected to hazards affecting health, safety, or general welfare. Four, any special regulations for the use set forth in other sections of the zoning ordinance are fulfilled. And five, the requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district of adjoining zones nor be detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of the residents of Nashua. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that the ordinance does not permit. The five criteria that need to be established for approval of a variance are: One, the variance will not be contrary to public interest. Two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed. Three, substantial justice is done. Four, the values of surrounding properties are not diminished. And five, the literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. Per the City of Nashua bylaws, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. Also, this board will hear all scheduled cases as long as there's a quorum of three voting board members present at this meeting. Any citizen has a right to contest the decision that this board makes. Should we make a decision that you believe is an error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received through Mr. Fark and the City of Nashua Planning Department within thirty days from the day after a decision was made. Should this board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court. You can contact Mr. Fark for more information. Per our approved zoning board of adjustment bylaws, the review and decision of each application occurs in two parts. The first part is what we call the public hearing. This is where the applicant and the citizens address this board and speak to the merits of the case. The order of testimony is as follows. The applicant will come up and have fifteen minutes to present their case. Then those in favor will have a limit of five minutes each to testify. Then those with opposition or questions will also have a limit of five minutes each to testify. Then the applicant has five minutes to speak in rebuttal. And then finally, a representative and only one person of those in opposition or questions will have five minutes to speak in rebuttal. We ask that you direct all testimony to this board, not to the audience. If you have any questions about an application, they have to be directed to the board, and we'll get them answered. The second part of the public, of tonight's meeting, is called the public meeting. This is where the board debates the merits of this case amongst ourselves. Please note that during the public meeting, there is no testimony allowed from the audience. We ask that you silence your cellphones, and if you need to have a conversation, we'd ask you to please just step out into the hallway. Mr. Fark, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
No, there are not.
Does anybody in the audience have any questions before we get started? Okay, seeing none. So tonight, we have six members here tonight. The alternate members are Mr. Jay Minkara and Ms. Estaphia Boris. So we will alternate between those two. So they will all, we will all be able to participate in the public hearing. We will all participate in the public meeting. But when it comes to the vote, we will alternate cases. And I will start with, for the first case, we'll start with Ms. Boris as the, as the voting member. But again, we all are able to participate in the meeting tonight. And we'll alternate back and forth. And I'll, I'll let you know when we get to the second case who the voting members are, the alternate voting member, just to ensure that we all understand. All right, we'll get started with the first case, and I'll read that into the record. The owner is Linda Lancaster. It's Eighteen Smithfield Terrace. The description is Linda Lancaster, owner, Eighteen Smithfield Terrace, Sheet Fifty-Six, Lot One Thirty-Eight, requesting the following: A special exception from Land Use Code Section One Ninety-Dash-Fifteen, Table Fifteen-Dash-One, Number Three, to construct an accessory in-law dwelling unit in a second floor of an existing house. And two, a variance from Land Use Code Section One Ninety-Dash-Turey to exceed maximum size of accessory dwelling unit, seven hundred fifty square feet allowed, eight hundred forty-five square feet proposed. And that was tabled from the One Twenty-Two Nineteen ZBA meeting. It's in the IRA District. So, then everybody got the revised plans?
Yes.
Is Ms. Lancaster here? Just come on up. Give us your name and address again. And again, the testimony from the One Twenty-Two meeting is all in the record. So anything that you testified to or anything spoke about is on the record.
Okay. My name is Linda Lancaster. I'm the owner of Eighteen Smithfield Terrace. I have put two, there were two concerns, it seemed, at the previous board meeting. One was the size of the unit. So I have reduced the size of the unit to six hundred and eighty-nine square feet so that it is now under the seven hundred and fifty-square-foot limit. So I do not require a variance any, for the size of the unit. It now meets the requirements. And the other concern about that size was the size of the primary unit versus the ADU itself. And on this document that I gave you, I've listed the various square footage of what will be the, you know, the six hundred and eighty-nine square feet for the ADU and a total of two hundred, two thousand three hundred and seventy-one square feet, the basement, the first floor, and a bedroom that I've taken out of the ADU on the second floor. The second concern had been the staircase on the right-hand side of the property that was going up to the second story, a patio deck and a staircase. And I had tried very hard to find a way to fit an interior staircase into the unit, and there is just no way to, you know, put another interior staircase in the house. So what I've given you is a number of pictures I've taken of the property and the existing deck. The new deck and the stairs will be built out of the same materials. And I'd asked to have been given some better scale drawings, which I believe I have given you some better scale drawings about how this will go along. There's thirty-six feet along the right-hand side of the property, and I've kind of laid out, okay, here's, you know, where the staircase is, here's where the deck is, and that. There is a substantial amount, as you can see in the pictures, of landscaping, trees, bushes, things that do, to a large extent, kind of block a direct view of the, of that side yard. And some additional landscaping could be put in if it's felt it's necessary. I, you know, my neighbor was here at the previous meeting, and as we said, we, I've been discussing with her some things we'll put up, you know, to make sure that everybody keeps their privacy. And the only other thing I'd like to mention is this deck and staircase. If I had just decided not to have the ADU, if I had just decided to build a deck and to have a second exit from the second floor for safety reasons, it's my understanding that because this staircase and deck is not in any setback, it's being built to code with the same materials that are being used over the rest of the house, that really, it is consistent with a single-family home. And that's really the, all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Mr. Currier?
Just to make sure I have this right, in your revised floor plan on the second floor, there's an existing staircase. And previously, like, pretty much the whole second floor was the ADU. And in this design, like, where it says "non-ADU bedroom," like, if you walked up your staircase and made a ninety-degree right, that would be like the non-ADU.
Yes.
So that, for example, could be, say, occupied by the occupant of the lower unit?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I had that right.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I basically moved the wall back from the landing, the front of the landing, to the back of the landing.
Okay. Thanks, I just wanted to make sure I had that right.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none? Thank you. Are there any, is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none. Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to this application? Okay, seeing none. We'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. So, again, we, we, we just do over, we were, we were, most of us were here with, from the original meeting, so we understood what was going on here. So I want to thank the applicant again. I think, you know, it kind of makes it a little less intrusive, obviously, with the one less incursion. So, so thank you very, you know, I thank the applicant, and I think it'll work for what she's looking for. The staircase, I think, you know, we have something here to scale a little bit more. I, I went by the home a couple of times, really trying to take a look at it from different perspectives, and then really thinking about, this is wintertime, right? So I know that the leaves are down and stuff, but looking at it for most of the year, I think that there is some validity to what the applicant is saying. I think that, you know, this is not a staircase that's, the home's right on the road, and you can, you can see it right there. I think it'll be shielded a lot by the, by the trees, a couple of trees. There's a birch tree there, and then another tree when you look straight on. So I really don't think it's something that, it's something that's maybe not as typical, but I don't think it would be something that would be completely out of character or would stick out unless you're looking for. I think it's reasonable, reasonable request. And right now, I don't really see anything at this point with this revised plan and getting a better perspective that the door is really pushed back to the back of the house. And again, it's just, you know, again, it's not a, there's no deck being built at the top of the landing. Meaning, say, there's not a deck to be sitting out, to be, you know, a table and chairs. It's just a landing. So I, at this point, I'd like to hear from the rest of the board, but I think that I would, you know, give you support of this application, especially with this revision has been made. Mr. Lionel?
The staircase still troubles me. Whether or not the applicant would be permitted to build a deck or a staircase there is not really the issue. The issue is the ordinance says, maintains the appearance of a single-family home, and one does not see an external staircase leading to a door, leading into the second floor typically in single-family homes. This is something that one sees often in two-family homes. So... I'm not, I'm not saying no, but I really, I don't like this.
Just let me just further define my, my position is because, for me, the unique situation is that the, that the AD unit, ADU unit is, and it kind of makes sense if you look at the house, is, is over the garage. And I think that we talked about the fact that, you know, it's, it's, construction-wise, we've lost a whole bay inside the garage, so that's why it's over there. So the way I'm looking at it is, my reasoning behind it is a condition that exists or, I mean, we're putting the ADU unit in, and I know we're creating that, but it's because it's over this garage space that's on the second floor. If, if this was a space on the first floor and there was an existing side door, you know, I think we've seen some of those before. Again, I'm not relating to other cases, I'm just saying that if it was, I think, if it was on the first ground level, I don't know if it would be as, as, you know, in your face or out there as it is. But again, that's my, my opinion on how I'm looking at this.
The door isn't the issue, it's the staircase. If it was on the first floor, there wouldn't be a staircase to the door. But just looking at it from the street, and you see a staircase, an external staircase on the side of the house, you don't see that on single-family houses typically. That's, that's my view. All right, so.
Thank you. Ms. Currier?
Well, I too appreciate the thought that the applicant put into this revised application. And it's interesting, you know, and commendable that the variance goes away. But, but I too struggle with the exterior staircase. And a couple of thoughts, like, when we look at the language of the accessory dwelling unit, you know, there's kind of three clarifications to the, to the, to the statement that the accessory dwelling unit shall not alter the single-family character or appearance. You know, and of course, it's no new entrance in the front, no new curb cut. And then the third one, number C, is a little more general. The exterior design shall be compatible with the single-family dwelling. And I too, you know, struggle with the idea of an exterior staircase on a single-family home. I think back, it was probably two springtimes ago at the zoning training when the bulk of the training focused on the state change of the accessory dwelling unit. And the driving force of that was not at all Nashua, Keene, Portsmouth, or Manchester. It was the large country home of the aging couples or the remaining person who, who, who wanted to remain in these big houses out in the country. And therefore, the door was open to non-blood, you know, people living there. And so that gets passed through the state. And, you know, a couple of years have gone by, and now, you know, folks, you know, legitimately look at that and want to take advantage of it. But this, the size of the house is now, we find this bumping up against it. And I look back at the original intent of that was, you know, large country homes. This is, you know, this initially was a cluster zoning, so it's a bit tighter. And while there is some screening, and I believe the applicant would do maximize the screening of this particular staircase, I, I, I struggle to, you know, kind of move the boundary to have an exterior staircase. And, you know, it's an interesting point. I did go take another couple of drives up to the north end to look at this, and because it's a very important case. You know, and, and I don't know, I wanted to give Carter a call and say, what is the criteria? Could I put an exterior case, staircase on my house just because I wanted to, you know, if I, or something? And, but I'm not sure if transitivity really applies there. You know, sometimes we look at somebody wanting to go from a single-family to a two-family, and nobody can almost rationalize better than members of this board and know the zoning book to think, well, in this situation, there'd be more cars with a single-family than, than a, you know, the two-family. But I, I'm not big on those sort of analogies. And even if, you know, the staircase would be possible with a deck or something like that, I, to me, it moves away from the single-family appearance. So I kind of said my piece. I'm open to hear other opinions here. Please feel free to try to sway me, but I'm sitting pretty much where Mr. Lionel is at this point. Whoops. So I've spoken my piece.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Minkara?
All right, I have struggled with that also. I think, though, that, given where it's located on the house, I don't think it's going to be terribly obvious. I don't know that it's going to really radically alter the character of the home as a single-family home. I appreciate that the materials are going to be consistent with the materials that are already there for the deck, for the, and for the house. I do share that concern, and I do wonder kind of where is the deviation? But, but in this case, it's not such a deviation from the appearance of a single-family home that it troubles.
Thank you.
Well, the staircase could or could not be an issue. I think it will be covered, and I think it will be as unobtrusive as it can be when I think of single-family homes, and I think of maybe a split-level home, and I think of a big deck in the back, and then I see the staircase going up to that deck. And there's a door, usually to the kitchen, that comes out, or the dining room, that will come out onto that deck. And so, single-family homes can have stairs going up to a deck. So that doesn't too much bother me. And I was at that spring training a few years ago around the ADUs. And aside from being the big old homes, it was also families who had individuals with disabilities who wanted to keep their young adults in their homes. And that was the driving force behind the ADU. And I commend this type of ingenuity and wanting to do, I guess, all that you can with all that you have. And so while a staircase on the side may not be optimal or optimum or ideal, I'm, I'm going to be in favor of this. I'm absolutely going to be in favor of it.
Thank you. Ms. Boris?
I'm also in favor of this. I appreciate what the applicant did to come back and revise. And I don't have an issue with it at all at this point.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Okay, if not, I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the special exception for owner Linda Lancaster and of Eighteen Smithfield Terrace, Sheet Fifty-Six, Lot One Thirty-Eight, requesting the following. The special exception... Yeah, it'll be just a special exception. Ms. Lancaster has reduced the size of the unit, so the variance for the extra square footage is off the table. So this will just be for the special exception. So the special exception from Land Use Code Section One Ninety-Dash-Fifteen, Table Fifteen-Dash-One, Number Three, to construct an accessory in-law dwelling unit in the second floor of an existing house. We find that is listed in the Table of Uses. We find that will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. Will not overload public water, drainage, or sewer, or any other municipal system. We find that the special regulations are fulfilled. Again, on record is the applicant's affirmation of all the accessory dwelling unit regulations. And we went through that last time in the last meeting. And will not impair the integrity to be out of character with the neighborhood or be detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of the residents. So with that, I make a motion to approve the special exception. Seconded by Ms. McKay. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Yeah, there's three, Ms. Boucher McKay and Boris. Those in opposition? Mr. Currier and Mr. Lionel. So with that, the motion passes. Congratulations, man, your motion passes. Again, just be aware that there is a window of appeal, but you can go ahead and contact Mr. Fark if you need any more additional help. Okay, with that, I'll close, I'll close case number one. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. I'd like to open case number two. Case number two is the City of Nashua. It's applicant, it's Kevin Gagny, addresses L. Conker Street. Description is City of Nashua owner, Kevin Gagny applicant, L. Conker Street, Sheet Forty-Eight, Lot Three, requesting special exceptions from Land Use Code Section One Ninety-Dash-One Twelve to reconstruct the existing boat ramp at Greeley Park, construct gravel parking lot, ADA-accessible preloading platform, and three bio-retention areas along with the associated site improvements. It's in the IRA District. If you have, if, if, come on up, give us your name, please, address.
Good evening, Sarah Marchand, Community Development Director for the City of Nashua.
Kevin Gagny, consultant with Stan Tech.
Thank you. I will just give you a quick, a quick overview of this project, and Kevin can, is here to answer all the good technical questions. This is a grant project that the city's been working on for almost a year now. We had our first public meetings, actually, a year ago, in February of last year. And the project is to construct a new boat ramp at Greeley Park and also a new access road to it that will all be gravel and dirt. It is a very needed project. If you have visited the Greeley Park Boat Ramp, it is in pretty horrific condition. And this is a great opportunity for the city to improve the only access to the Merrimack River. This is a key access location for both police and fire rescue services. The only, the next access is in Merrimack, is in, excuse me, in Manchester. So this is the one major access to the Merrimack River in the city. And with these improvements, we truly believe that there will be more positive activity and hopefully, less nefarious activities that maybe have gone on, like illegal dumping and things in the past. Because with a nicely-designed boat ramp that people will use, we think it will be much more positive. So I'll turn it over to Kevin.
Actually, I don't know if you'd prefer me to go through the various questions and answers that we put in on the application?
We, we've read the application, so if you feel comfortable with that. I think we've all thoroughly read the application, and it's very thorough. But that is, that's really up to you, that's your choice.
No, I, I don't, don't feel the need to reread them. I'd like to get right into any questions that you might have about the project.
Are there any questions? Mr. Lionel?
Normally, when we get an application for something that had to do with wetlands, there's also documents from Conservation Commission or State about what mitigations they require. Has that been done? I didn't see those documents.
So... We, I'm not sure what you have in front of you. We did go to the City of Nashua Conservation Commission, who voted unanimously to support the project.
I think there was one condition of approval from the Conservation Commission, which was that we needed to maintain the dirt road that we were installing better than the existing one. But they, they did give unanimous approval of that, and we can get those, I can get those minutes to you if you don't have them, sorry.
I don't need them specifically, I'm just, I'm just used to seeing them, and it wasn't here, so.
I believe, Mr. Lionel, I was reviewing the case that Kate Hoyer sent us an email with more details. And I believe that letter was online, was in the email that we got? And I just assumed it would be in the packet tonight.
Ah, okay.
But it does, I think, I believe I saw it, and I did...
Yeah, now, now that you remind me, I did see that. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Probably going to refer to that, so I think in general, we can do that.
Just say that it approved per the Conservation Commission with all applicable conditions. That's fine.
So, so again, testimony is obviously that you'll comply with the Conservation Commission recommendations?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the applicants? You can have a seat, thank you. Is anybody else in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this application? Just come on up and give us your name and address, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Gene Porter, Seventy-seven Concord Street in Nashua. We're two hats tonight. I am the representative of the recreational boating community on the state-chartered Public Water Access Advisory Board. Two years ago, the Access Advisory Board reviewed every single navigable body of water in the state of New Hampshire and established a priority list of where additional work should be performed to provide access to public waters. The number-one priority... The number-one priority project was the Lower Merrimack River, which needed a modern boat ramp for public access, for which there is none, no modern boat ramp in the state of New Hampshire. And so, that was very strong support from the Public Water Access Advisory Board. Unfortunately, the Fish and Game Department at the state level has only enough money to maintain their existing ramps and not enough money to take on projects, funding projects such as this one. The city did a good job of getting a grant and coming up with some city money to put together what I believe is a very credible and usable upgrade of an existing boat ramp. I need to emphasize again that this is not a new boat ramp. This is an upgrade of a decrepit, dangerous boat ramp that's been in Greeley Park for decades. My second hat is as the chairman of the local Lower Merrimack River Local Advisory Committee, we are terribly interested in getting more people on the river. The more people that use this river, the more people are vested in protecting it and will come to the zoning board meetings and the planning meetings and help our committee in helping to protect the river against encroachment. So, both of these bodies, in which I sit, strongly support the city's efforts to get on with this project and recommend that this board approve this exception. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? All right, thank you very much. Anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Okay, seeing none. Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to this application? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Courier?
Kind of backing up and, you know, reminding that we are essentially looking at, you know, the Conservation Commission recommendation, which is a positive. I have every reason to support that. You know, in addition to that, I couldn't personally be more pleased with this application because more than twice, I've gone to use that boat ramp, and it's shaded and dark, and you get down to the end, and there's some nefarious-looking characters, and I kept my windows up and doors locked and drove off. And I think it'll be a completely changed situation with this design, and it reminds me of the boat ramp that's near Stella Stadium, you know, years ago. Well, that's been improved. It's been a while now, but now that it's improved, there's people using it. I've never read of any problems in the telegraph, and it seems to get used a lot in the nice weather. And I think it'll happen here, so I couldn't be more pleased with this, and I think it's going to accomplish everything that it's set out to, so I'm in full support of it.
Okay. Just to note, I know I said I was going to say, but Mr. Minkera is the voting member in this case, just to make that clear. Mr. Lino?
I too am enthusiastically in support of this application. I've been down to the existing boat ramp such as it is. It can barely be called that, and I very much look forward to this project being completed and put to use by the citizens of Nashua and the surrounding areas.
Thank you.
And I would agree, this is clearly a much-needed improvement, and I would just also note that in the design, you know, real care has been taken to avoid any wetlands impacts during construction from erosion, and also the bio-retention swells, which I think are a real improvement and a good addition to the plan.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, Ms. McKay?
I too concur with my fellow board members. It's a gorgeous body of water, and it's going to be really nice to see more access. More people will come to the park, into the city. I just think it's such a positive, really nice, well-done City of Nashua.
Thank you.
I also concur with all of my colleagues. I'm looking forward to seeing this improvement.
I also agree. Anybody like to make a motion? Mr. Courier?
I'd make a motion on behalf of the owner, City of Nashua, the applicant, Kevin Gagny. Again, the address is Land at Concord Street. The description is, well, Sheet 48, Lot 3, and the request is a special exception from Land Use Code 190-112 to reconstruct the existing boat ramp at Greeley Park and construct a gravel parking lot and ADA accessible preloading platform and three bio-retention areas along with associated site improvements. This is listed in the Table of Uses, again, at Section 190-112. I think the board finds it will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety for the users of the boat ramp. Both the pedestrian safety and the traffic is going to be improved with the, I'd say, straighter road to get to the boat ramp. There's no impact on public water, drainage, sewer, or other municipal systems. I mean, well, maybe there is an impact on drainage, and per this plan, the drainage from what's there now would be improved with the bio-retention areas. The special regulations, we didn't speak to the nine of those in particular, but in the motion I make, these nine special wetland conditions are spoken to and met and exceeded in the written application that we have, so I'm saying again to have it clearly on record that the nine special wetland conditions are all met in the application. And I think the board finds it will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood. In fact, it'll be an improvement to the neighborhood to have what I would call a user-friendly boat ramp in here, in this location, which is not at all a user-friendly or easy-to-use boat ramp now. So, for the, I believe, these five special exception criteria are met, and I make a motion to approve the application as presented tonight.
Mr. Lino? Discussion, do you want to specifically say in the special conditions that the CONCOM?
Yeah, the CONCOM letter, per testimony, is in the minutes of the Conservation Commission meeting and deliberations on this, will, I'd like to add to this record. And again, the Conservation Commission has given their endorsement to this project with, I think it was just one stipulation, but even if that number is incorrect, I'm saying the applicant has testified that they will adhere to the special conditions that the CONCOM has placed on their letter. I forget the date of the letter, but it was in our email package. But it is, you know, the formal letter by the CONCOM is the applicant has agreed to adhere to that criteria. So, with that amended motion, that's my amended motion.
Mr. Lino, do you want to second that again? Okay, Mr. Lino, second that again. Any more further discussion? All those in favor? That's five to nothing. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming. With that, I'll close case number two. I'd like to open case number three. The owner is David and Nicole Harrington. The applicant is Christopher Gee Elevation. I apologize if I pronounced your last name incorrectly. Elevation LLC, 9 Hadley Drive. Description is David A. Nicole J. Harrington, owners Christopher Gee Elevation LLC, 9 Hadley Drive, Sheet D, Lot 484, requesting variance from Land Use Code, Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach three feet into the 40-foot required front yard setback to construct a front porch entry. It's in the R40 zone. Please come on up and give us your name and address, please.
Good evening. I'm Christopher Gueye. My current address is 14 Lang Home Drive, Nashua, New Hampshire, and I'm here as a shoo-in for my clients, David and Nikki Harrington. We're seeking variance of the front 40-foot setback for the newly-proposed front entry. It is a five-by-nine wooden structure encapsulated with vinyl PVC. As you can see by the, as you can see by the precedents provided from the neighborhood, it is quite common to find a house with a front porch and/or portico, which actually makes my client's property an anomaly within the neighborhood. So, we stand here tonight asking for your approval of this variance, so not only can we provide a safer access point to the dwelling for not only the Harringtons, but also their guests, as well as bring the property's front facade in line with the style and charm of the surrounding neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Mr. Courier?
So, I, you know, certainly read through the application, and in looking at the site, I see the points. It's almost puzzling to me why this house is situated up front, and yet a notable thing of Hadley Drive is all the other houses are set back. I'm just curious, was this house built first or later?
Yeah, so, as told by the clients, they were actually the second owners of the property. Everyone within the neighborhood seems to be first owners, and when they originally laid out stakes for the plots, every single house on the road was on the setback. And in talking with neighbors, each person on that street moved their stakes backwards so they could have the future accessory of a front porch, something like that, walkway. For whatever reason, the previous owner of my client's property decided not to do so, which is why we find ourselves where we are today.
All right, thank you for that explanation.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none. Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, open the public meeting, and Ms. Boris will be the voting member on this case. Mr. Courier?
I concur with everything in the application. A couple of big points there, you know, most of the other homes have some sort of covered porch. Agree with that. It's, you know, I guess I was concerned in going by the house, you know, it's sitting up front, an anomaly like that. I'm put to ease with hearing the history of it, because I didn't know if, I guess I'd feel a little different if this was like the last house built, and it was built recently, and then this is being asked for, because that history would be, have me in a different position than something that just ended up here, and another owner comes along and is looking for something, the entrance, which is a small and reasonable request. And a couple of other points, I appreciate this rendering. It's very clear what it would look like, so if it's approved, we know what it's going to look like. And also, you know, this is mostly open. It's a couple of posts, it's an open, so as I drive around the bend and envision that, if you're coming from the Nashua side, almost like that front right corner of the house is almost going to be more predominant than this, because, you know, you're coming around the bend. So, I feel the applicant has kept this proposal to a minimum to accomplish what they want, and the open concept of it, you know, you kind of see through it. It minimizes the impact into that front yard setback. So, for all those reasons, I feel, you know, comfortable that it meets the criteria, you know, and I'm looking forward to hearing five other opinions.
Mr. Lino?
I agree with everything Mr. Courier said. I too had, you know, when I went by the house, I looked and I said, why is this the only house nearby that's right up to the setback? But, you know, history is what it is. I don't have a problem with this application.
Ms. Minkera?
And I agree with my colleagues. You know, I would just add that I do think that in our climate, having some sort of covered entry or porch really is consistent with reasonable use of one's property, reasonable use and enjoyment. In this case, what's proposed is very modest in size. It's about as small as you could build a covered entry and meet code. It's consistent with design, you know, consistent with the other homes in the neighborhood. I think it's consistent with the design of the house. And I also think that while granted, the house is closer to the street than others in the neighborhood, that encroachment itself is de minimis, and I think would be imperceivable.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. McKay?
I concur with everything that's been said, and I especially concur around the weather and needing that shelter from the snow and the rain. Yeah. I don't have a problem with this at all.
I also agree with what's been said. Ms. Boris?
I also agree.
Anybody like to make a motion? Mr. Courier?
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of owners David and Nicole Harrington, and the applicant is Christopher Gueye from Elevation LLC. The address is 9 Hadley Drive. And again, the description is a request for a variance from Land Use Code, Section 190-16, Table 16-3, and that is, the request is to encroach three feet into the 40-foot required front yard setback to construct a front entry porch. The zoning restriction is applied, I think this board finds interferes with the landowner's reasonable use of the property, considering the unique setting of the property in its environment. As the boards discuss, this home is built up to the front setback line. It is around the bend of a curve, and what the landowner is asking for, three feet into the 40-foot required front yard setback, I think this board finds is a reasonable request, which will give them the benefit of a covered entryway, and it won't look out of character with the neighborhood. I think the board finds that this request is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. I think the board finds it will not adversely affect property values of the surrounding parcels. I think the board finds it's not contrary to public interest and substantial justice to the landowner is provided by this three-foot encroachment. So, I make a motion to approve the application as before us tonight.
Seconded by Ms. McKay. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? That's five to nothing. Congratulations, your application is approved. Just be aware, this is the third day with no appeal, or highly unlikely. Thank you very much. With that, I'll close case number three and open case number four. Case number four, owner Alcide Lizzie, applicant is Brad Lizzie, the address is 4 Daniel Street. Description is Alcide J. Lizzie Jr., owner Brad Lizzie, applicant, 4 Daniel Street, Sheet 122, Lot 504, requesting the following variances from Land Use Code, Section 190-16, Table 16-3, one, to encroach six feet into the seven-foot required right yard setback, and two, to encroach eight and a half feet into the 10-foot required rear yard setback, with both requests to construct a roofed walkway building addition. It's in the general business district zone. Welcome.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, my name is Gerald Prunier. I'm an attorney with offices at 20 Trafalgar Square in Nashua. I'm here representing the applicant, who is at the end of Daniel Street. As most of you who went and viewed the property, Daniel Street is off of West Hollis Street. It goes down a piece of property. The Wesley side of Daniel Street is our Wesley side. The Naughtley side is the railroad tracks and the walkway, city walkway throughout. There's some commercial property on the east, and on the Sutterly side is a single-family restaurant, uh, single-family home, excuse me. If I may, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just hand out a couple of pictures, so I'd hopefully better understand. It's also the front of the business. Lizzie Doors have been operating there for almost as long as I've been here in Nashua, some 50 years. The right-hand side between the two properties is where the walkway is. The second picture... The second picture shows what is being done, and what we're here for this evening, is the extension of the roof over the walkway in that particular area. And the third is a letter from the, the single-family house to the south, who indicates he has no objection to it, and is really the only one that would be in any way affected by it, if there was any effect. My client started this project thinking that it was just a small project, covering the walkway. Was told by the city that he needed a variance, needed a building permit. So he came to see me, and I confirmed the city's request, and he stopped working, and is back here to get the variance. This piece of property will not adversely affect the neighbor. He's indicated that he has no problem with it, and so his values will not be diminished. The spirit of the ordinance, putting a roof in that particular area, is not out of character with the neighborhood. And it will help him with his area by protecting the walkway, as well as he has a little area at the end where he has some inventory to take out. It's all I got, is a little four-foot roof extending over a walkway. It's, the location of the building is in the back area, where the only one that would really see him, see this, is the next-door neighbor, who has a letter that indicates that he is not opposed to it.
Any questions? Mr. Currier.
Just one, on the application, it says that, is the fence on the property line? Because it sounds, it says...
The fence is on the property line. The roof starts about a foot off of the, from the fence.
So it's a foot on the number four side, or it's a foot over?
On his side, on Lizzie's side.
All right, it was just a little, it looked like, it looked like the end of the roof was, was over the fence and draining onto the abutter.
Yeah.
Which was a concern of mine, but obviously the abutter has no concern with it, and the application says it's going to be guttered to not go on the abutter's property.
And when I first looked at it, I said, you know, does it really have a pitch enough to go on the other side? When I got up close to it, I concluded that it came down on Lizzie's side.
Okay, thanks. That's all I wanted to clarify, or need to be clarified.
Mr. Mincara, so you have a hand up?
Could you just clarify for me where the walkway goes to, and what the purpose of roofing it is?
The first question I didn't...
Where does the walkway go to? And what's the purpose of the...
The purpose is that, two things. One, at the end, well, one, there's a second floor to the house, where people live, so it's covering the walkway. And also, at the end, he, he has a little place where he has some inventory and so forth, so anyone going to get the inventory is being protected from the weather.
So is the intent, is, what we're seeing in the picture, the extent of the covering, or would it extend forward from where it is now?
I'm not getting your question.
So, right now, I see that there's already an area that was partially constructed. Is that the limit of what's going to be constructed?
Yes.
Or is it going to continue forward?
That's the limit, that's the limit. Yes.
You all set, Mr. Mincara? Okay, Mr. Lionel.
Has there been any thought about snow sliding off the roof? The gutter won't help with snow. I mean, any snow that slides off that roof would end up in the...
That's a small roof. There's a bigger roof for the second floor, that covers the second floor, and then this covers a little piece of the building down below. The second, the big roof has drainage that comes down along the side, and comes down all the way to the ground, has stuff that's there. This is just a small roof, so there's not going to be a lot of rain or snow coming off of it. And whatever comes off of it would end up going on his property.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience that has any, would like to speak in favor of this Anybody, anybody else?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, before, Mr. Lizzie is here, the father, and he's telling me that they have a rock gully that take care of all the rain and the snow as it melts and so forth in that particular area.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else in the audience would like to speak in favor of this application? All right, and as there is, again, we're going to just make sure that it's in the record, Mr. Prunier did bring this up to our attention, but there's a letter here dated 12/14/2018 from Jose Sanchez Dominguez to Daniel Street, which is the director butter of Nashua, in Nashua. "To whom it may concern, I am the butter to Lizzie's garage doors, LLP, and I have no objection to the overhangs that exist. Signed, Jose Sanchez Dominguez." So we have a letter in favor of the application. No one else that would like to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none. Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to this application? Seeing none. I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Currier.
Well, the letter from the abutter has provided me, like, from a concerned, a concern with this application to being okay with the application, because when I read it, I'm like, well, that's right up to the property line, and the photograph, and when I looked at it, I'm, I agree with Mr. Lionel. If we have a big snow, I could see it sliding, I think it's going to slide into the abutter's property, but, you know, this business has been here a long, long time. I don't think there's any sort of delta of business, you know, it's obviously getting on okay with the abutter. It's at the end of a dead-end street, and I think that's another factor that provides this, my support for it. If this were something that's visible to the general public, I could see, I wouldn't be so favorable to it, because it's right up to the property line, but nobody but the owner and the abutter, and maybe that house across the street is even going to see this. And I feel it allows the applicant to maximize the use of his property. So I'm, could be convinced otherwise, but I find support for the application as it is. And that's my two cents.
Okay. Now, just to be clear, Mr. Mincara is voting on this application. Anybody else? Mr. Mincara.
Two things give me pause. One, the extent of the intrusion to the setback is substantial. Eight and a half feet into 10 is quite an intrusion. Definitely, the snow or ice is going to go into the neighbor's property. Whether the neighbor appreciates that or not, I have no idea. But I also feel that while I do appreciate the testimony of a direct abutter, the most impacted person, I think is important, I think we also have to recognize that who lives there now may not live there next year, and could still be impacted. I think that the thing that gives me the greatest pause is, is I don't understand the intended use of this. This is not a, you know, covering an entryway to a property. It's not essential access to, say, a second floor for safety. It appears to be covering a walkway that doesn't go anywhere, but to some supplies that appear to be stored in the back. So I'm not understanding how this is necessary for reasonable use of the property. I don't understand what it is it does. It doesn't, it doesn't appear to be, I was looking for, there's a doorway back there, or that's how you get to the residence, or something that it was protecting, and that doesn't appear to be the case. I'm assuming it's some sort of a work area, but I don't know that.
Anybody else? Mr. McKay.
Like Mr. Mincara, I wondered, and then, and maybe I'm wrong, maybe it's an assumption I'm making on my part, but that if they need parts, if they need something, they're walking back and forth through there, maybe to get it. And so if that is the issue, it's an access issue, and it's wanting to keep the materials probably protected, and so for that reason, it makes logical common sense in my head. But I'm assuming, again, that that's the logical reason. And in that case, I mean, I understand wanting the covering, and I understand wanting the protection, and so for that, I don't have an issue with this particular roof.
Mr. Lionel.
I, you know, I sort of share Mr. Mincara's concerns about the effect on adjoining property, again, whether or not the abutter understand, is, understands what might happen, or maybe some future owner. The purpose of this, again, just seems to be to provide just a small amount of protection for, for some materials and people working in the back of the property. It's not, the, this additional roof doesn't go out very far towards the street. I'm not quite sure what the right word is. I was going to say frivolous, but that's not right. I don't think it, it's necessary for reasonable use of the property. Obviously, they've been using it this way for many, many, many years. I know I was, I was once a customer of Lizzie's back in the early 1990s, so they've been over there for a long, long time. It bothers me. I'm on the fence about it.
Okay. Thank you. I don't particularly care for it, but then, as I, I'm familiar with the property, I had worked on Will Street for many years, and used to walk back and forth to Dunkin' Donuts, so I'm familiar with looking at the property. I think that side of the building is very, I would say, it's, you know, unless you're in a Dunkin' Donuts side, and really looking at it, the Dunkin' Donuts in the back, or packed in the back, that I used to walk through the back, or, you know, going through the drive-through, I think that side of the building is really tough to see in any other time. So with that, you know, I understand, to me, it was obvious that they want to protect some materials that they have, which, I can appreciate that. I know that it's a, it's a site that they've been there for many years, and I think they've just, you know, grown in that site, and that's what it is. So, not that I'm particularly fond of this type of incursion for this purpose, but I think in this case, it's a little bit more unique in the respect that there's only, like I said, there's one abutter, and I understand that the butter may not understand whether or not snow comes over into his property. But, you know, that's three months a year. I think, I think what the butter's saying is that it just really doesn't diminish my, my, my time here, you know, looking at it. So, so I guess I don't really have anything that would prevent me from voting against it at this point, or any real big reason to vote against it. Mr. Lionel.
I was wondering whether we might attach a special condition that snow retention devices be installed on the roof. I think that would go a long way towards making me feel better about it. The little, I don't know what they're called, but they tend to be just little flaps that just keep the snow from sliding off a roof. I see them on roofs a lot.
That's certainly up for discussion. I mean, we have the purview to add a special condition. Sure.
On, if, my comment on that is, I could, you know, I, I too don't know what they're called, but I know what you're talking about, because I see them on roofs, and while I'm favorable to the application, it is, as is, I'm favorable to adding that stipulation, because, you know, I think it's a reasonable stipulation, and so I'd be okay, you know, with the application, with that stipulation. It would provide, I think, a higher level of protection for the abutter, even though the abutter's okay with it as is, so I'd be good with that stipulation.
Any other discussion? All set? Does anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Lionel.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the owner, Alcide Lizzie Jr. The applicant is Brad Lizzie, address is 4 Daniel Street, sheet 122, lot 504, requesting the following variances from land use code section 190-16, table 16-3. One, to encroach six feet into the seven-foot required right yard setback, and two, to encroach eight and a half feet into the 10-foot required rear yard setback, with both requests to construct a roofed walkway building addition. This is in the general business zone. The board feels that the request is reasonable, and not granting it would interfere with landowners' reasonable use of the property. We've considered the positioning of the house, and the fence, and the longstanding use of this property as the business. We don't find any evidence this would injure the public or private rights of others, although note the special conditions that we'll talk about later. We believe this is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We have testimony from, in a butter, that they are, they are agreeable to this addition, so we don't believe it will adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. It's not contrary to the public interest, and substantial justice to the owner would be served. The special condition that we would like to attach to this is that when the roof is constructed, that it have devices intended to prevent snow from sliding off the roof, snow retention devices. With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve this area variance.
The motion is to approve the area variance? Seconded by Mr. Currier. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? That's four. Those opposed? That's one, Mr. Mincara. Congratulations, your application is approved. And again, third day where to appeal, which I know you know about. Thank you very much. With that, I'll close case number four. Case number five, owner is JKS Realty LLC and LJJ Realty LLC. The address is L Fairmount Street and L Hutchinson Street. The description is JKS Realty LLC and LJJ Realty LLC owners, L Fairmount Street and L Hutchinson Street, sheet 62, lot 100, and sheet 127, lot 131, requesting a special exception from land use code section 190-114 and 284, to encroach into the 40-foot wetland buffer at two separate locations, construct access driveways for a four-building, 183-unit multifamily development in the RC Zone. Before we get started, some housekeeping. Ms. Boris was scheduled to vote on this case. Ms. Boris is going to excuse herself.
Mr. Maynard's time is up.
So, we'll wait till Ms. Boris steps down, so Mr. Mincara will be voting. Does anybody else have any conflict, or are we all set? All right, we'll have five voting members. The other... The other piece of business I want to do before we get started, for all those of you who are here for this case, in, in, just so we understand why we're here, we are here only for the wetlands incursion. We are not here, unfortunately, we're not here to discuss traffic or anything that impacts us. We're only here for the wetlands part of this. So they need a, they need a, they need the approval from us for the wetlands incursion. And that's the only thing that we can really hear and listen to tonight. And with this, this is something that we educate our constituents about. If you have concerns with the project itself, if this were to be a favorable recommendation tonight, then it would go to the planning board and in, and in that case, that's where all, this would be taken up. But I just wanted to be clear and I can, you know, Mr. Karia has a lot of experience with this type of application. And again, I would just maybe ask Mr. Karia if I have missed something or misstated why we're here exactly for this case, but I think I've covered it. But if you have any comments?
Sure, I think you've covered it. Just to maybe state it in a different way, this project, as they ha, as it's designed in the application, if it were to go forward, there'd be a couple of disturbances to wetlands. And therefore, the first step is to go to the Conservation Commission, which has occurred. And the Conservation Commission has given their approval, I think with some stipulations we'll hear about. And this is the board that makes the yes or no decision on the Conservation Commission review. So we're essentially reviewing the Conservation Commission's review of the wetland encroachments.
Right.
So I, I'm saying the same thing you did maybe a little differently.
Thank you.
For the benefit, hopefully, of all interested parties.
And, and I think the, the thing to be clear about is that this is a permitted use on this property. So, so really, there's no other special exceptions or variances that the applicant is seeking at this time. So this is why we are saying that, this is why we're here for tonight. So I just wanted that to be clear for members in the audience. So go ahead, Mr. Maynard.
All right, and just to expand a little, this is the first step of many for this particular project to go through. We need reviews by planning, by engineering, by fire, et cetera. We need to finalize some of the other aspects of the design. But what you'll see when I present tonight, what we're doing tonight is essential to the use of this particular land and that's therefore where the encroachments are. So. For the record, my name is Richard Maynard, a professional engineer with Maynard Parket Engineering of Nashua, representing the, the landowners and applicants, JKS Realty and LJ Realty LLC. Also here is Bruce Gilde, Gilde, a certified wetland scientist with BAG Land Consultants. The project concern is a roughly 15-acre property that runs from Baldwin Ave on the east to Warsaw Ave extension on the west. Warsaw is here, Baldwin Ave is over here, with Broad Street Parkway on the north and the various communities, I mean residential things associated with Fairmount Street, sometimes called Little Miami. The property is also known as Sheet 62, Lot 100 and Sheet 127, Lot 131, all in the RC zone. The property is proposed to be developed for multifamily residences of 183 to 187 units in several buildings. The layout I'm showing you here is illustrative for the moment. It, it still needs to go through several design change, design reviews and, and perfections. But access to the property is from Baldwin Ave with a secondary access from Warsaw Ave. So the primary access is off Baldwin Ave into the property. A secondary or an emergency access would be to, to Warsaw Ave. The property is long and narrow with two small wetlands roughly in the middle. There are two buildable areas to the east and west of these two small wetland areas. A connecting roadway or driveway is proposed to run between the two, between the two wetland areas, principally for access and emergency purposes. We have two wetlands on the site and we need to have this driveway to connect this part with this part. And it's the only way through the property. The property lines are in pink. The wetlands under Nashua regs, these wetlands under the Nashua regs calls for a 40-foot buffer zone. Our proposed driveway would impact the outer portions of the buff, 40-foot buffer. The permanent impact to the buffer would be 1927 square feet and 1074 square feet. That's illustrated on a small plot plan. It should be in your particular packet. In order to minimize the buffer impact, retaining walls would be built on either side of the roadway to eliminate the need for substantial slopes from the roadway into the buffer's areas. There is no connection between, there's no waterway connection or physical connection between the, the, the two wetlands at this time. They are totally separate. However, we will install a 48-inch Diana pipeline under the roadway to allow critters and other small animals to migrate between one wet, one wetland and the other. The culvert, it's shown there, is a pipeline, not a drainage culvert. There's, there's no flow that occurs between the two wetlands areas. The Conservation Commission has walked the site and given the project a favorable recommendation. It's outlined in their letter dated 12/5/2018. Now I'll have our wetland scientist, Bruce Gilde, to give you a brief presentation of various wetland environmental aspects of the project.
Thank you, Richard. My name is Bruce Gilde. I'm with BAG Land Consultants, Concord, New Hampshire. I'm a certified wetland scientist, certified soil scientist, and this is my 30th year in business. I went out here and looked at the parcel and I had previously walked it and I didn't know what the layout was because I had to just look at what was, what made up a jurisdictional wetland. And I did find that they were isolated in between the two. I carefully argued because there's three criteria that make up a, a wetland. We have to have, number one, the, the driving force, which is the hydrology. So we have to have a water table close to the surface or saturation within 12 inches of the surface. Those are primary wetland hydrologic indicators. Second thing is we have to have a predominance greater than 50% of wetland plants in the wetland for it to be a wetland. And then third, in a natural situation, we have to auger down with my auger. And I looked at the soil within 20 inches of the surface and I type out the matrix colors. And if we have a hydric soil, then that's strike three. If we have all three, then according to the federal manual that we use, which was put out in 87, we have a jurisdictional wetland. This is accepted by the New Hampshire Wetlands Bureau. And I did find two wetland areas that were out here. I also did some research with the National, the Natural Heritage Bureau to see if there was any rare threat or endangered species on their database. And they found, not on this parcel as far as turtles or amphibians or anything that was threatened that way, but they did find like garlic mustard. And I think there was another plant that was found, you know, hundreds of yards away and maybe something in this area right here, off the property. I think that the engineer took my wetlands line because I'm the first one that goes out there. I flagged the wetlands and then the survey picks them up and gets a real accurate location of where those wetland boundaries are. They show them on the plan and then Richard and his engineering expertise will start laying out, trying to avoid. And that's what the state wants. They want you to avoid wetlands and any impacts that you can. He's done a very good job here of going in between. When we were out there with the Conservation Commission, I did my wetlands in, in August 15th of this year. And we, it was an exceptionally wet year. We had close to 12 inches above normal in rainfall. These were not overflowing, but I was very concerned to see if there was any kind of a hydrological connection between these two wetlands. And there wasn't. Basically, between the two, it's not a sag, it's a crest. So things break both ways from the center right here, going both ways. We specifically typed out the vegetation in that area in between. We looked at the soils and we looked at the hydrology and it did not meet all three of those criteria that I previously discussed. So it wasn't jurisdictional wetland. So we hung our flags around each isolated wetland like this. And then because the database from the Natural Heritage Bureau is not all-inclusive, it really, it counts on the wetland scientist to look for those rare threatened endangered species or any turtles or any other amphibians that might be out there. And we did look and we did not find anything that was rare threatened or endangered in those two wetlands. Also, at the same time, we wanted to look to see if these were vernal pools. And vernal pool has its own criteria as far as primary and secondary indicators. There's six primary indicators that are listed and if you have just one, then you have a vernal pool. Fairy shrimp is, is one of those six. Wood frogs are another one. Spotted salamander is another one. I think foretoed salamander and the Jefferson salamander. And so we did not have those. Basically, they didn't dry up this, this summer because of the rainfall I talked about, but there's not the structure that you need. Because these primary vernal pool species, when they deposit their eggs, they have to have some type of a, a structure or a branch or something that they can cling, the eggs can cling to while they germinate. So they're not vernal pools, they're isolated pockets. I have my suspicions. People tell me that in history from living around that area, that they've been there for years and years and years. But I, I think they're just two small depressions that hold water when you get the, the rainwater. And I also think that, that they're down below the water table so that they do hold water for long periods of time during the summertime.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? Mr. Karia.
The connection that's proposed between them, I think Mr. Maynard said a 48-inch pipe. Was that your suggestion or the Conservation Commission's suggestion or?
No, it's ours. We, we proposed that ahead of time because it's the right thing to do and to make sure that critters, when I go from one wetland area to, to another wetland area and we don't want them coming over the road or the driveway. So I'll put this passageway in.
Is that, is 48-inch pipe, is that, for example, like halfway full of earth?
About, about a quarter. The lower half would be about six inches into the ground so that you have a dirt bottom inside the pipe level. So it appears like a walkway. It's not a, it's not meant to, for water to flow. It'll have dirt in it. So.
And then how long is that proposed pipe?
If you look on the, the plot plan, proposed road cross-section FF, the, the pipe is about 41 linear feet long. The roadway itself is 22.
Feet wide?
Yes. So then we have retaining walls and a sidewalk. So that's why the, the critter crossing, the critter pipe is 41 feet long. Side to side.
And then existing right now, edge to edge of the wetland, what's the distance between those two wetlands now?
If you look on the plot plan, Jack, between the two wetlands, there's about, I didn't anticipate that, 40, about 90 feet. 90 to 100 feet between the actual wetlands here and the actual wetlands over there.
I, I measured 75 in the field.
Okay. I mean, it, it, the information is here, but even with a good magnifying glass, I was having trouble.
That's why, that's why this drawing is there. That has all, has all the particular dimensions, its particular location. I understand, yes. That's why I gave you so many drawings.
That was it for my questions.
Okay. Is there anything else, Mr. Maynard, that you want to present us?
I just want to emphasize for the abutters that are here that are concerned, there's several other steps to go on this process before this ever comes back before a public board again. It's likely to be a few months down the road, maybe six months, who knows? Because this is a, a big complicated project. As important as anything is the style of buildings we're going to put on here and stuff which has to be still figured out. So, but this is the first step and we need to be able to, especially for emergency purposes, to be able to get from one side of the property to the other. Any project of any consequence needs two ways to get to it. So the primary access will be from Baldwin, but we have an emergency access over here primarily just in case Baldwin is inaccessible. So the majority, if not all, the traffic will go on Baldwin. So.
So the plan is, is like one of those like fire gates or something like that?
Yes.
Right.
The fighter department doesn't do gates anymore. They find that they can't get them open. So they won't do those anymore, but I asked them, why don't you do a crash gate? And they don't like those either. So, so it'll be an open emergency access with signage and stuff to, to that effect. But no more gates. They won't do that anymore.
All right.
All set, folks?
Yeah, all set. Any other questions? Mr. Karia.
It's not specifically wetland related. It was more curiosity when I was looking at the site. But the proposed road from Baldwin, how does that align, for example, with the footpath? I was just, not that it has to do with this wetland, I was just curious where that align, the current proposed road aligns, like with that footpath. It looks to me like maybe on the other side of that.
It's, it's, it goes on both sides of it, Jack. It starts out to the left, but as you go about halfway on that footpath, it's, it's off to the right, down low. Your footpath you saw probably went like that.
Yeah, well, like where, if you're on Baldwin Street?
At the end of the guardrail. That's where you enter.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Just curious about.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Mr. Mankara.
Just a couple from, from Mr. Maynard. Well, one, just to clarify for the record, there are no actual impacts to the wetlands themselves.
Correct, only minor impacts to the outside of the buffer.
Secondly, is there, is there any plan to discharge site drainage into the wetlands?
Because this is a hole in the ground, essentially, everything drains to these wetlands, nothing drains off-site. The, the main facility for drainage is to infiltrate it into the ground with infiltrators and it'll end up going through the ground into, and hitting the groundwater and also at the same time feeding the wetlands area. So, but not a, there's no direct discharges.
Thank you.
Any other further questions? Okay. Anybody else like to speak in favor of this application? Okay, those with questions, concerns or opposition, come out one at a time. Come on up. Yes, ma'am? Can you name an address, please?
Hi, my name is Deborah Wall. I'm at 23 Huey Street in Fairmount Heights.
Excuse me, I didn't hear, 23?
Huey Street?
Huey Street.
So I have a couple of questions that, do I direct?
You'll direct them to us and then Mr. Maynard will be taking notes and those will be answered by us or by Mr. Maynard, the applicant.
Okay. So the roadway between the wetlands, is it, I'm curious if, what the width is? If it's a two-way road, if it's a one-way road, if it's only for emergencies or if it's for these people to get, like these people to go to the Baldwin Street?
So the roadway testified is 22 feet wide.
Is that a one-way, that doesn't mean?
No, that's a two-way street. That is a city spec street. Sorry.
Driveway.
It's a dri, it's a driveway. Sorry, but it's private property, but it's 22 feet wide. Is, and that is the primary access to, to the lot in the back, right? So, so all the access will come off of Baldwin and, and will come through the first part, the section on the right and then through that small area to get to the other.
Okay, so I have a follow-up question then. Would it be less impact on the wetlands if it were one-way? As you probably all know, we lived with a one-way street on Baldwin Street for centuries. For, for a very long time. So it is possible. And if it, if it has less of an impact on the wetlands, is it a possibility? First question. Second question is, will this eventually possibly have access to the Tamposy property back out to the Parkway?
I don't know about that and I don't know if it's really germane to the application because what we're really looking at is where you, you were originally focused is that piece between the wetlands.
No, I understand, but if they don't really need access to Baldwin Street, then this doesn't need to be two-way. They don't necessarily even need a road there because they could get out.
Okay.
Tamposy's way.
We'll have Mr. Maynard, when he comes back and rebuttal, he'll, he'll address that.
Okay. Okay. So my other concern is... So, my other concern is what he just said about the drainage into the wetlands, all the salt from the cars, the oil, all that being plowed, and all the runoff that goes into the wetlands. Originally, I was just concerned about the roadway, but now it sounds like all that drainage is going to be in the wetlands. And I do appreciate the tunnel, if you will, for the wildlife, but I do think that they're going to cross on top of the road as well. I'm wondering the speed limit and stuff like that.
All right, we'll get those answered.
Okay.
Any questions before? Okay, thank you, thank you for coming. Anybody else like to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition? Excuse me, do you name an address, please?
My name is Gerard Willett, I live at fifty-four Fairmount Street, everybody calls me Jay. I have a couple of concerns. I think, without getting into future projects, Jackson, many meetings going forward from here to figure out the property, what I'm concerned is a couple of things. The plot of land is one thing, but also the access to where Baldwin Street is. It's very narrow unless if they plan on buying up some of the property to the left-hand side of that. I think it's going to be a very tight squeeze. The other thing is, is that I'm concerned is that, that I'd like, we would like more information about the property itself, the environment, the wetlands. What I'm worried about is also that, is it ninety feet between two wetlands, or is it seventy-five feet? One says ninety, the other one says seventy-five, so what is it really? And that's what I'm concerned with. I'm also concerned with, without really getting deep into the whole project. I know that this seems to be the beginning, yes, but what I'm worried about is once you open access to these roads, this is what's going to end up happening, is these are going to be the main roads going in and out. And I know originally, you guys need to figure out the tannery site first before we even get into this. And I know that was the proposed plan at the beginning, and that's how I stand today. I just wanted to let you guys know that I'm really worried, concerned about the area. It's a very quiet neighborhood, it's been built up over the years. And I don't know if the neighborhood can handle a massive project like this, as well as the tannery. And now you have the projects, meaning the buildings on Franklin Street, the apartments over there, and I'm really concerned, because it's, you're talking about a very quiet neighborhood. I've been in the neighborhood for the last seventeen years, and it went from one project to another, and I'm really, really concerned. But thank you for your time.
Thank you, any questions? Mr. Curry.
Thank you, Jay.
Yes.
So, yourself and the previous person were speaking about, were you thinking of the possibility of access the other side so that there's not movement through the wetlands? I don't myself know if, if I go down to Warsaw Street, quite frankly, it's the first time I've ever been there, and I've lived in the city a long time, and I'm like, oh, there's that, you know, other site I read about in the paper all the time, is, I don't even know if there's access, but is what your, the last two folks, yourself included, is your thought like to access this property from that way, or is that even possible? I don't know, it wasn't even a consideration of mine until I.
The sliver of land is so narrow to begin with, meaning to gain access on each end. I think my concern is that, I don't think this should be the access area. I think it should either come from the parkway or a different spot, or finalize another project, the tannery cleanup mess down there first, before they even to get into something like this. Because I think it's just going to add to just the area, and it's going to.
I'm not familiar, I haven't been on that tannery property, but is there any access to that for the public, or is the only access from the, you know, trying to think of the street that ends at Warsaw, is that Fairmount?
Yeah, it'd be Fairmount.
Fairmount, so that Fairmount is the only access to the tannery property, is that the case?
As of right now, yes.
Okay.
It's projected that it could be in the future access from the parkway.
Okay. So, I, just a couple of thoughts. Like, I don't disagree that this would be a change to the neighborhood. I've often thought, when I go over Baldwin Street, how this is kind of like a little quiet neighborhood, and you see a lot of woods there.
Yes.
And I mentioned that path, because I cycle a lot, and I take that path to get up ever since the parkway.
Yeah.
You know, it's a better access going north and south than Main Street, or on the other side of the highway.
Oh, yes.
You're on two wheels, so I go through there a lot. But, that's, getting back to the wetlands here, my thought was that the proposed route, which is off Baldwin and through the wetlands, to me is less disruption to the neighborhood, because the traffic wouldn't be going from the other end. And I was thinking, geez, if I lived in this nice neighborhood, I would, I would think it's optimal to be off of Baldwin versus the other end, but that's just me. Just my thought.
I just, I don't think we're quite there yet. I think what really needs to happen first is, I think the tannery site needs to be finalized first before you guys dive into that section of land. And I always believed that from the beginning, because it's such an odd setup. It's a hilly area, meaning that it's way up above the parkway. And I'm really concerned about that impact as well, just kind of like with the wetlands, and I don't know. You know what I mean, are we looking at, like I said before, are we looking at ninety feet or seventy-five feet between the two wetlands? I don't know, it seems like we have conflicting information here. And that's what I'm concerned about, I'd like more information.
All right, we'll get that spoken to in a minute, thanks for coming.
Anybody else like to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition? Come on up, ma'am, give us your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Sandy Belknap, I live at forty Fairmount Street, the corner of Fairmount and Hutchinson. And this morning, when I saw about this hearing, I wasn't aware of it. An alarm went off in my head seeing Fairmount and Hutchinson, that this was land, and I thought, oh my gosh, this is, you know, right where I live. I understand now, talking to Mr. Maynard and looking at the plans, the way that it really is. So, that, I think words are going to be important as you start this, as you start this project going forward. It's going to be a long process. So, a few things that I've noted, that's Baldwin Street, unless it's Baldwin Avenue is a new road. But I think for these hearings and for the paperwork that the city has for legal purposes, the names are going to be important, so people understand that it is Baldwin Street. There's, I don't know of Baldwin Avenue in that area. Same thing for Warsaw Street. It is Warsaw Avenue, so the Baldwin Street part is the big thing. Also, that neighborhood's known as being Fairmount Heights, it's had that term for years, because it's one of the highest altitudes in the city. And then you go very far deep, you know, deep down to where the parkway is and where some of these wetlands are. So, I'm not a wetlands expert, but I think that that needs to be considered. And I'm not here to speak against any of this, I just think right now, where this is the first meeting, it's important to clarify some things. I've been involved, and now this is not a Mohawk Tannery discussion tonight, and I know that, and I was not even planning to talk tonight, but since it came up, I just want to clarify so this board understands. I've been working on that project for twenty years here in Nashua now, with our neighborhood. We've worked with the city of Nashua on many iterations. Bernie Plant came to us, and we had a meeting last week here in Nashua, and he unveiled plans for what he's calling Mohawk Tannery Estates. And as he went through those plans, we saw, you know, how nice it's going to look, and there's a lot of other issues with EPA which are not applicable for right now. But in, with the Warsaw Street access, one of the big things that the neighbors have been kind of sticking up and asking for, is that we don't want an access to the site from Fairmount Street, which Warsaw Street is at the end of Fairmount Street. So, we finally, after all these years, have a developer looking at the tannery, ready to go forward when the EPA comes through with their final recommendation in about four to six weeks from now. So, we feel good that that's been listened to. So, now seeing this additional plan, where the access is from Warsaw Avenue, that was a surprise to me. So, I think, you know, I don't, again, that would probably be more of a planning board issue versus the wetlands issue, but since the topic came up tonight, I just wanted to get that on the record for this first meeting. So, that's the only input that I have, but I just wanted to make sure. And if anybody has any questions, I always have all the history of Mohawk Tannery, I'm happy to share.
Any questions?
I do, and I do have a question, ma'am. And I think we're drifting a little from the wetlands, but you're talking about the tannery, and I'm just kind of curious, so if that were to be developed, you know, with Mr., is it Plant?
Mr. Plant, yes.
Plant. You're saying that that access would be the end of Fairmount Street?
No, the access would actually be from the Broad Street Parkway. So, Mr. Plant listened to the neighbors and the recommendations at that point from the city, and he's proposed that the access is from the parkway and not from Fairmount Street. Because the amount of traffic that would be coming through, and again, this is more for a planning board meeting, I would think, but people cut through already from downtown Franklin Street up Fairmount, and if they don't miss Baldwin Street, they come all the way down to Warsaw and get stuck in that little loop. We're like a peninsula up there in that little area, so we're kind of surrounded by all these different developments that are happening.
Well, I do cut through there once in a while, but.
That's fine, I stopped by to visit, that's fine. But, you know, the point is, is if people don't understand, and like even like calling up Baldwin Avenue, I think, again, words are going to be important, particularly at this stage of the process as we're moving forward. And, you know, just to get everybody on the same page and understand. And, you know, we don't know what's going to happen with Mr. Plant's recommendation. He still has to go through planning board as well. So, actually, Mr. Tamposy came to a meeting that Mayor Donch has had last September to talk about Mohawk Tannery, and Mr. Tamposy listened to what was happening, and it came up that he was looking at this, but I think we're all kind of in shock that they're moving almost parallel together, which could make sense, I don't know, I'm not a planning expert. But, it's just something, you know, for you to think about with those wetlands, you know, the height that we're at, I guess that was my big point, is it's Fairmount Heights, I don't know what the drainage is going to be, what, you know, Mr. Plant's project might affect, because he's going to be excavating a lot of land at the end of Fairmount Street where Warsaw is and that path might be. So, I think there's a lot more unanswered questions, but I think that's typical for a project like this, that, you know, I'm just glad that there's the first step to get the discussion going.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, you have to hold up. We have rules that say that we can only, you can only testify at once.
It's more important to answer some of those questions.
So, the rules, I'm sorry, but, and again, it's not, me personally don't want you to come back up. We have specific rules that dictate how testimony is taken. So, we take testimony in order, we have, everybody has one chance to come up, because if we allow people to keep coming up, then what would happen is if the process doesn't move along fairly. So, what will happen, though, is after, anybody else that wants to speak in opposition, questions or concerns, Mr. Maynard will come up and have a rebuttal. Then, those of you who came up, one person is allowed to come back to speak in rebuttal, and at that point, you can, if you have anything else that you'd like to add, or if it's yourself as a spokesman or somebody else, you'd be more than happy to give that at that time. Okay? All right. Anybody else like to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition? Come on up, sir, give us your name and address.
Hi, David Jeffrey.
Please wait to the microphone.
Trying to save time. Hi, David Jeffrey.
Just in the microphone so we can get it for the record.
David Jeffrey. Forty-nine Fairmount Street. I just have a couple of questions. My understanding is that there's a lot of terrain relief here. I'm just wondering how much grading is going to happen? Like, are they going to have to do a lot of buildup of the terrain to site these buildings, and whether that's going to, like, increase the runoff, the natural runoff into these wetlands? Second, this here is Carver Street, which is like a little stub. Was there ever any consideration given, is there any consideration being given to, like, extending that or doing anything through there? Doesn't look like it, but just curious. Third is, are these plans available publicly, or will they be? Or are they registered, or is this just in sort of private documents kind of thing?
So, we'll get those two questions, first questions answered. The third one is, are we part of a public record?
Okay.
And you can come to City Hall, to the Planning Department, and I'm sure they would be willing to happy to get you copies of anything that was presented tonight.
Okay.
Okay?
Great.
Any questions? No, thank you for coming.
Absolutely.
Anybody else with questions, concerns, or opposition to this application? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Maynard, you have five minutes. Sorry.
Awkward.
Well, I'm not going to address too many things with the planning and traffic and things like that. It's absolutely essential that we have this connection so that we can have this piece of land connected to that piece of land. It's a twenty-two-foot road, it must be two-way for emergency purposes, and Baldwin Street will be the primary, if not exclusive, access. Originally, I wanted this to be gated, which would mean no traffic on Fairmount Street, but the fire department doesn't want that, but when we go to the planning board, we're going to emphasize that this is, will be signage there to say it's emergency access and not a throughway, da-da-da-da-da. Some people are dreaming here, when they want a connection to the Broad Street Parkway. That's a proposal, there's no approvals from Mohawk Tannery site to use that. That's the idea they're proposing so far, but they don't have any commitment, they don't have any approvals to that. Second of all, there's no way that the tannery project can only have one access for emergency purposes like that. That's a huge project dwarfing ours, that's many more units than we'll ever have. They will have a secondary access. Fire will require, and it'll end up being someplace else, and it's highly, highly unlikely there won't be some access to Fairmount Street. The idea is to connect that project to this project, that's just going to exacerbate the project, the kind of traffic that comes through our project, we don't necessarily want that. We don't have any rights nor any ability to connect to the Broad Street Parkway at this time. The Broad Street Parkway was designed and funded federally and et cetera to be a limited access highway. That means no connections. It's very, very difficult to get a connection. The only way it seems potentially possible is we're talking about a federal cleanup, so that may trump this limited access thing, but don't count on anything like that now. That's a purely discussion. The tannery site and its development, it's three to four years out. They can't even decide how they want to clean it up, they don't even know where the funding is. They've been talking for a year now or more, so whatever happens on the tannery site happens, but it's totally independent of us. Regarding the separation between the wetlands, if the wetland scientist is actually out there measured it, it's seventy-five feet, then it's seventy-five feet. You know, I had to do something on the top of my head, because I didn't necessarily know that answer at the time. The, as I said, this site is totally independent of the tannery, it had nothing to do with the tannery. There are, because the people have seen the site, there are steep grades here, there will be grading, there's some potential for retaining walls, et cetera, all that has not been totally worked out. However, drainage patterns, et cetera, will remain the same. There's no way to change the drainage patterns here. It all is going to drain towards the middle of the site, which is these two little wetlands project. I'm pretty sure these two wetlands are there only because that's where the groundwater is on this particular site. Because they are five to ten feet below the immediate land around it, so these two little wetlands are somewhat groundwater-fed, or they're at the groundwater table elevation in that regard. The salt, as best we can, as with any roadway or any driveway near wetlands, there'll be some salt intrusion, but it'll be minimized, because the drainage from the site will be sent through infiltration basins and infiltration chambers into the ground, and then it'll allow to go through the ground and eventually reach the wetlands sometime later. That process tends to clean out some of the salt, not all of the salt, there'll be some salt intrusion. But, there's no way to prevent that, so. Forget what else he said. I think that answers all the questions, I can't remember anymore, but.
There was one about, is it Canal Street or?
A what?
Carver? Carver?
Carver, the stub, next to Warsaw, I think, like there's a stub Carver Street? Was there, the question was whether there'd be ever any access?
This road here, these slopes coming into this site, as you notice, there's a wetland right there, they're extremely, extremely steep. You need length to extend out so that you can have less steepness. You need length to extend out so that you can have less steepness, and so this, this driveway actually ends sloping way the heck over here, so we need that amount of length to get from here to the elevation of the topography in here. There's no way to go from here in here with that length here, so this access is way too steep, too close to the wetlands, and just can't work. You'd end up coming in here twenty feet above grade, and there's no way you can make that work in this particular site. Believe me, we looked at all these particular potential accesses when you do these things, so. The only reasonable access is Warsaw and Baldwin, and Baldwin is obvious. There's no problem with Baldwin, it's, we have frontage on Baldwin, there's plenty of room for our accessway and our driveway, et cetera, so. Thank you.
Just to clarify, Mr. Jeffrey, I think one of his questions about the grading, I think what he was asking, I was kinda curious, although it's not specifically the wetlands, like, the, the level of, say, the ground level of the buildings, 'cause when I sitewalk this on Fairmount and Baldwin, you know, you kinda see wood, you don't really, I don't really see whether it's up or down, is the ground level of these proposed units, is it about the same level as Fairmount, is it down lower?
Oh, it's much lower than Fairmount, it's probably thirty to forty feet lower than Fairmount.
Oh, wow, okay.
And it's probably twenty to thirty below Baldwin. Baldwin, this area here is about ten feet higher than this area, but this is thirty to forty feet lower than the end of Warsaw.
So this proposed road is kinda going downhill?
Oh, they're going at ten percent grade, the maximum allowed.
Wow, okay.
We, we.
So I'm just saying, from a visual viewpoint, these buildings aren't gonna be up high, they're gonna be down low.
No, they're gonna maybe, if, we haven't figured out how, whether we're doing three, four, or five-story buildings, but at best, they're gonna be able to see the upper level, at best. Uh, and, and that, you have to look through the trees, because it, as part of the zoning for this, it was remantated that we have a fifty-foot buffer area, so all of that will remain treed, so it'll be very difficult to see this particular property from any, but the, maybe in the winter, even now, even you can't see through there, 'cause there's enough evergreens and things along the periphery of the, of the property, so.
Well, we didn't speak about that, but there is, I noticed, a fifty-foot buffer, so that is a fifty-foot, like, undisturbed buffer as part?
It's undefined.
Undefined, it's just, all right.
It just says buffer, it could be a, that's yet to be, we haven't got a clarification, that's, that could be a setback or an undisturbed, it doesn't say that, so.
Okay.
But anyway, one way or another, it remains veget, it'll be vegetated no matter what, and there won't be any building, so it's almost unlikely, you barely see these buildings, and I don't say it's impossible, but you'll barely see these buildings. You potentially will see them from the Parkway, because the Parkway looks straight down on this particular site, the Parkway's even twenty feet higher than this particular site. This is really in a bowl.
Okay, thank, I didn't, I didn't see that. And Mr. Valet's question, I think you addressed it, but just to clarify, the tannery site is, is a completely different owner, a completely different project?
Totally independent, totally independent. The tannery is over in this particular area over here. And the tannery's, excuse me, talking about development all along in here, those of you who don't follow it, it's quite complicated, they're debating right now, closing that in place and sealing it in place, they're talking about taking asbestos from elsewhere, it's three or four asbestos areas, excuse me, they're talking about moving that asbestos and put it in the tannery waste location, et cetera. They're talking about different things they wanna do, and then different spending levels, as I understand, anywhere from like twenty million to forty million, you know, so they're nowhere near resolving how they're gonna handle that site, other than something's gonna happen, but it's not imminent, and they got a lot of steps still to go through, so.
Okay, and then there was a question, what do you think the proposed speed limit is, if this were, you know, developed on this?
Inside my property on the driveway?
Yeah.
Whatever they wanna tell you that, but they're likely.
'Cause it's privately owned.
It's private.
Okay.
And they're not gonna entertain, this is not a raceway, it's not a cut-through, and it's not, it's not that easy to come down here, make this windy road, and then come back out, there's no purpose in doing that, that doesn't get you anywhere. It's not a shortcut, like some of us know, that you go down Fairmount Street for the back way into downtown. Some of us live in town for a while, know that if there's heavy traffic, that we use that route, but this is, I can see if it ends up too many people trying to do a shortcut, that they'll petition the Fire Department to close this off or do something to restrict access in here, so that people can't be doing that kinda stuff. So if anybody's doing speeding, there'll be a resident of this particular project, and whoever, whether it's a condo or a rental, or the management company, well, I'm sure are gonna do something about that, so. I don't see there's any need for speed bumps and stuff, speed bumps not, by themselves, are not necessarily a good, a good idea, but, so, there's no speeding through here. This is a regular residential apartment project.
Great, thank, thank you, I'm all set.
Any other questions, Mr. Montero?
Was there ever any consideration given, or could there be, to break it into two projects with access to one portion on Warsaw and one from Baldwin?
Yes, however, it doesn't meet the emergency access standards, it's, it, doesn't matter what community that's in, you have any kind of number of units, you need two independent accesses to any kind of project of any, any size, no matter, this is larger, one hundred eighty, but even on a twenty or thirty unit project, all Fire Department's gonna want two ways in, because if one way is blocked by a tree of power lines or, or a vehicle or whatever, you need a second way in, for whatever reason, and, so you must have a second way.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Maynard.
You're welcome.
Okay, folks, if, if you choose so, one representative can come up and speak, so you either have a choice to pick a representative to come on up and, and have five minutes to talk, you don't have to. If you want to come up, and if you want to confer, we can take a short recess, if you wanna get your thoughts together, just let me know what you wanna do. So we're, okay, so we're gonna take a five-minute recess, and then we'll, we'll reconvene. Sir, are you all set, sir? 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 Are you all set? All right. So, yeah, state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes, and we'll have the timer going, so you can see where you're at, so.
Okay.
Go ahead and.
Deborah Wall, twenty-three Huey Street. So the other concern that I forgot to bring up earlier is, for years, there have been signs posted on that property about asbestos, and it was a dumping site. I know some of it was cleaned up when the Parkway was built, I'm not sure if there is still asbestos on the property and how that would affect the wetlands.
Okay. Is that it? Any questions? Okay, thank you very much. With that, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting.
Just one thought, I mean, the last bit of testimony, I didn't know if we might wanna entertain having Mr. Maynard address the question, just a thought, we don't, we don't have to, we could do that in this sake of getting the question answered, because it kinda came in at the end of testimony.
I mean, that's fine, I don't know if it's directly to remain to our decision-making process, but, but I think that certainly won't hurt, so if you'd like to make a motion?
I guess I'd like to make a motion to reopen the public hearing, specifically to have the applicant address the last question we heard about the asbestos, potential asbestos, I would say.
Seconding, anybody want to second, Mr. Lionel? All in favor? That's five to nothing. All right, I'll reopen the public meeting, the public hearing, to specifically answer the question of whether there was asbestos on that property or cleaned up. Any knowledge, Mr. Maynard?
There's no asbestos in anywhere near the, the wetlands, there is an old remediated site way the heck over here, where it's buried and covered, but it's nowhere near any development or anything, it won't be, won't be touched whatsoever, so, but there's absolutely no asbestos within the area, any vicinity of the wetlands, or even, never mind the wetlands, no.
Okay, so where you pointed to on the map was where there's no development, it's just up near the Baldwin Street portion.
Yes, it labeled exclusion area, which is a.
Euphemism for, don't touch it, and, and it's where there's some asbestos buried.
Okay, thank you for.
And that's under a, a state program, that's all documented, et cetera, et cetera, so.
So, again, testimony, it is on your property, top corner, it's remediated, nowhere near what you're gonna even come close to touching.
And, in case you folks don't remember, if you have asbestos on your property, you're allowed to gather it and bury it someplace and put it in a secure location on your property, you don't, because all asbestos-type materials nowadays, I think, still has to be trucked all the way to Rochester and the Hanter or into a landfill in Maine, so it gets quite expensive, so. When they're small amounts, they put them in isolated spots and protect them and get, and they're noted on drawings and noted on, on other documents too, so that people know what they're getting into. And for the record, this is called a permitted use by special exception, it's not just a special exception, in case everybody doesn't know, if we meet all the requirements, you're almost obligated to approve it, and that's for the benefit of your butts.
Thank you, Mr. Maynard. I'll close the public hearing and reopen the public meeting. Thank you, Mr. Correa. So, obviously, there's, there's obviously a lot of sensitivity around this project, and I, you know, obviously generally expected that, and I wouldn't expect anything less. And I think people are sensitive because of adjoining property, but again, that, you know, unfortunately, is not connected to this at all. I know that there was a comment made, you know, that they, that we should, that the city should tackle that project before this project. Unfortunately, that's, I guess, not how it works, this is a private piece of property that has, it's residential, it has permitted uses on it, and so the owner is trying to develop that, but obviously trying to, obviously, you know, meet the requirements firsthand of the secondary access type point, and needs to cross this wetland. I believe that, you know, again, we have a letter from the Conservation Commission that has, and again, I know that we didn't ask the applicant, but I know it's all part of the package, and Mr. Maynard, as an engineer, has been in front of us several times, and has always affirmed the, the stipulations on the wetlands, special exceptions, so I'm full confidence that that would be followed very stringently. So we have that, with that, and I don't, you know, there was no comments here, and again, favorable recommendation, there was nothing here that raised a red flag. And again, you know, it's kind of sensitive, because I want people to understand that we're here to affirm or deny what the Conservation Commission has approved and what they're presenting, and that's it. I think that, again, this project will develop over time, and I think that this is just not just gonna happen overnight, and I think that, that, you know, folks that live in that neighborhood, you know, should be concerned and should be participating in the planning of this project, and I think it will be, obviously, done at, in different venues, and may come back here for some things, but right now, this is what's, what's going on. So with that, I, I think that the application's pretty thorough, the, put a lot of credence into the wetlands, the engineer that we had to come up, I think, described very succinctly, and is obviously, obviously has his own licenses, and would not jeopardize that to make this project work, and it was very clear and forthright about what he did to determine what the wetlands were and what that was. So with all that, I am in support of granting this special exception. Mr. Correa?
Yes, I, in short, I have support for the application, there's kinda like two parts of this application. One part is what we're here to deliberate on, which is specifically the wetland criteria, and that's what we're here for tonight. Having sat on the Conservation Commission for some time and gone to a lot of that training, when the wetland laws were enacted in the state and the town, there's a bit of a safety valve to those about allowing access to developable property through a wetland or a buffer, and this really speaks to that. There's a lot of developable land, and to access it, you have to, in this case, I would really say nick onto some buffers, not actually the wetland, where it's, you know, it's, it's a buffer of the wetland, and, and it meets the criteria. I think the Conservation Commission is the prime arbiter on that, and they've concurred with that, and so while these two wetlands are gonna have more human activity around them if this project goes in, it meets the criteria that the state sets, and the.